Welcome to the January ninth, twenty twenty five in-depth city council meeting. City clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Lampy.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockard.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Conard.
Present.
Six present, one absent, your honor.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and tonight we have two in-depth discussions. The first one is John DeBeat, presentation of Sister Cities twenty twenty four work. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, and thank you for the invitation, mayor, city administrator, and city council. Would like to thank you first of all on behalf of Muscatine Sister Cities Association for your support, and also would like to extend our welcoming, also wishes to our new city administrator here, and also would like to thank you for paying and continue to pay our dues or membership dues to Sister Cities International. With me tonight, I have a group of what we call citizen diplomats, a group of people who decided for many years to volunteer many hours in order to spread the mission of Sister Cities organization, which is building peace and building mutual respect and understanding among people and among citizens of different countries. So I would like to mention or introduce them. Those are board members of the organization. We have with us Deb Huser, and we have Dr. Naomi DeWinter, we have Peggy Gordon, who is among you and represent the city as a board member with us. We have Marshall McDonald, Miki Tripp, Larry and Marcy, Clausen, and Krista Reganiter. So those are our, or some of our board members that works tirelessly, really in order to spread the mission of Sister Cities organization. So today, I'm sorry, tonight, I would like just to give you a brief information about what we did last year. And as you see, we feel very proud that Muscatine Sister Cities has nine cities in eight countries. We are the most active Sister City chapter in the state of Iowa, and right now we are trying to finalize or add another city, the city of Ban, Liberia, to also our list. And once we finalize this and make it official, there will be like ten cities in nine countries. And this is unheard of in a city of our size usually. Even, you know, as I participate in meetings nationwide about Sister Cities International, they always mention Muscatine. They always mention that for many reasons. Perhaps maybe because the Chinese president came here and spent some time in the eighties, or because of the work of Iwans in this movement. So that's always a plus, and that's always a positive thing. So basically, this is, as you see on the screen here, the list of the current cities that we have. And with that, I would like to remind everybody of our mission. Our mission as Muscatine Sister Cities is to offer the people of Muscatine and of similar nations opportunities to get acquainted, to understand one another as individuals, members of their community, as citizens of their country, and as part of the family of nations. So this is basically the mission that we basically continue to remember, and we remind our members of, so that we build our work basically with our sister cities global wise based on this mission. Some of those activities, we don't have a list of all the activities from last year, but some of them, as you know, most probably, Muscatine is becoming a hub for many Ukrainian families due to the political situation in Ukraine. So basically, these are some of the pictures welcoming some of the families as they join us here in Muscatine. Also, we participate every year in the celebration of the Chinese New Year, and this is also this past year, twenty twenty four celebration at the Mirror Hotel. Another thing here is we do have a sister city relationship with the city of Gending, and basically, this is one of their delegations when they came to visit us last year, and we had some luncheon talk about planning for the upcoming events and so on. And as a matter of fact, we will have sixteen students from our city Gending the end of this month for a couple days here in Muscatine. They will be going through certain, again, programs, and Krista, our board member, will be heavily involved with this particular program with the Stanley Center for Peace. So they are working on putting together that program. Every year, and hopefully, all of you this year will attend our annual dinner meeting. Every year, we have a great gathering, our members and our friends and supporters, we get together, and we talk about the importance of Muscatine Sister Cities work. And during that, also every year, we also honor one of our members for an outstanding member of the year due to the work they do throughout the year. And I'm sure not a lot, most of you knows Dr. DeWinter. Dr. DeWinter was the outstanding member of the year for twenty twenty four. So we are lucky to have her here with us also as a board member, but also as someone who represents Muscatine Community College on the board with us. During the Easter time, our members raised one thousand dollar, and we send it to support needy families in the city of Ramallah, Palestine. And we send the fund to the Greek Orthodox Church in Ramallah, and we give them the authority to disperse this money to needy families in the city of Ramallah. And this is a letter, thank you letter for us from the priest of that church as a result of doing that work with them. Also, every year, we meet with the mayor of our Ichikawa Misato, Japan, Sister City, to arrange what we call a traditional now event here in Muscatine, which is an event that we do every year now in August to commemorate the Nagasaki and Hiroshima. We ring bells for peace on both sides, and because of that, you know, we usually meet with them, we arrange, we plan for that, and we go ahead with that event. I'm sure some of you saw that work. We do have several display places here in town. We have one at the Masol Library, we have one at Muscatine Community College. Here, the city hall, we have many items that we received as gifts from our sister cities throughout the year. So there are, so those are some of the, again, items that we have. This is, as I just said, you know, this is the day, August fifth, here on our side, ringing bells with our sister city in Japan, Ichikawa Misato. And we saw them, they saw us, we talked to each other, and we continued to press for peaceful messages around the globe. Usually, we do during the year, summertime, what we call summer social, we get together. Not everybody, we wish everybody we can join us, but whoever is around, they will join us, and we have really good time spending together, our time talking about, again, sister cities and what we have been doing and what we are planning to do. This is a regular board meeting. We meet usually at the public library here, Masol Public Library in the board room. So we invite all of you to attend this meeting. I mean, we love to have you with us. We usually meet the first Monday of each month at five thirty. So hopefully, we'll see you with us if you can any of those months. This year, we decided to celebrate what we call the World Cities Day, which was on October thirty first. And we thought there's no place can be better to celebrate this event than our international park. And as you see, it was very heavy rainy day, but still, we decided to gather some of us and basically talk about our cities around the globe and share stories with each other. This is, as I mentioned, it did happen last week, this one. I had a meeting over Zoom with the mayor of Ban City, Liberia, and two principals, two school principals. And our board member Melvin, who is also a member of the board for Muscatine Sister Cities, was on the call. And we are planning now the time and the date where the mayor of that city comes to Muscatine and hopefully sign the official agreement. Right now, we have a friendship agreement with them, and we want to turn it into an official agreement, hopefully by the time the mayor visit us and come and and sign the agreement with Mayor Brad and so on. Because you see, as a sister city program, we are an independent organization, but we continue to work with the city because at the end, the mayor of the city is the one who signs those agreements. So that's why we work together mutually, together in order to continue working on this program. Last week also, we had a very successful holiday celebration, and we gathered between the Christmas and New Year, and we had really great time together. Just sit relaxed, talk to each other, and again, explain why we are there, why we are working together, and so on. This is something usually occurred that we issue and send to all our sister cities. It's Happy Holiday and Merry Christmas in different languages, or the languages of each one of our sister cities. So we send that to each of our sister cities. So with that, this is basically just a brief of what we did last year. And it's an honor for me also to present with the board. I would like to ask the board and ask the mayor and the council if they would like to be with us. We would like to present you with a frame of our, you know, friendship or international friendship park. We thank the city for sure for, one, giving us that piece of pocket park to use as a friendship park, and also for the city continuing to take care of that park is thank you for doing that. So at that point, unless you have a question, I thank you again on behalf of the organization. We look forward to continue our great relation and our great work together for the sake of our city, Muscatine. And I would say, God bless you all, and God bless our city, Muscatine. So if we have a moment to take a picture with our sister city board members and the mayor and all of you, please, would like to have a group picture if we can.
That sounds good.
Thank you. So any questions for us?
Maybe just a quick comment. I mean, I've had the luxury and the privilege to sit on your board meeting more as an observer and participate for the last few years, but one of the key things that they established in my mind was citizen diplomacy, because we can do this individually and work together. And through that, I think of it as promoting kindness and understanding. So if we can do it at our level, it might make things a little better. So I appreciate that, and I bought my own bell to ring the bell now. I've been doing that for a couple times. And Ukrainian support, we're given excited with Liberian city, because we have a large Liberian group now. So we're just, you guys do an awesome job, and thank you for all your hours.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. And as I said, it's an open invitation to all of you to come and be with us and attend even one meeting a year. It will give you some sort of sense of the work of the organization and the work of this group of people who are giving a lot of hours to volunteer in order to, again, promote the mission of this organization. So thank you. I don't know how you want to do that.
I was gonna say, any council members, if they would like to come up and get a picture, feel free, please. And board members, please. Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, and tonight, we have another one. It's a presentation of the upcoming twenty twenty five Muscatine triathlon brought to you by Squencher. And we have Adam from the police department. And Katie, are you gonna come up too? You might as well, from the county, you bet. City, county, working together, love it. That's your dad, you bet it is.
Nice, nice.
Snaky McBoat Snake.
Well, welcome. And yeah, so Adam's gonna talk about kind of the overall idea with this triathlon that will be happening in Muscatine. So, welcome.
For those of you that haven't met me yet, my name is Adam Raisbeck. I've worked at the police department for twenty-three years. Part of working at the police department, I'm in the major crimes unit now. We get asked to kind of come up with an idea to put on like a community involvement project. This kind of originated this. I wanted to do something with physical fitness and health related. It kind of grew into something a lot bigger than what I had planned on. And just by the nature of everything with the insurance and everything that's required with this, there's a lot of different involvement from different departments. We've got the county parks. I'm gonna be asking for the city's help. We've got the sheriff's office for traffic control. We got the emergency management with Chris Jasper, with all the medical staff and all the requirements that this event's gonna need. The gist of everything here is an overall summary. It's a sprint class triathlon. There's three events that you do. It's a seven hundred fifty meter swim, a twelve point four mile bike, and then a five K run. It's going to be down at Deep Lakes Park. Part of what I wanted to do with this was to create an event that does kind of three areas for the community. Something that's health oriented, something that brings a new experience to town that can kind of be what I would consider a larger experience. And the third aspect is to try to circulate money and bring business in for the small businesses in town. As Mayor Bark has said, Squencher is our main sponsor for this event. We also have other businesses in town that are kicking in with this. The Chamber is getting involved with the advertisement of this also. The total, since this is the first year, part of when I went and I talked to the people at Squencher, part of the agreement for all of the money for this was that it's gonna be done as a ten-year commitment, so it's not just a one and done event. It's gonna be happening every year for at least ten years that I'll be taking care of it. We have a lot of people that are involved. Katie Hammond from the Parks Department here, she's been a major part of everything. We have a board set up. In total, since this is the kickoff year for it, it's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars to get everything up and going and the first year's expenses for everything. So we've got support from the businesses in town. Financially, we're set to go. This is going to be a USA triathlon sanctioned event, which means there's going to be pros coming here to put in qualifying times for the nationals. I've already been contacted by the pros, some of them. I think I've got about ten of them so far that have wanted to know the logistics in town, hotels, accommodations, when they can come, if the tracks open prior. So without even having a chance to do much advertising as of yet, we've got everything set up. But this has just been going by word of mouth and by creating the website. And I think we're already thirty to forty people into it being registered. At minimum, I'm looking to have five hundred people register. That's kind of the financial baseline to support itself every year after this. The cutoff is gonna be six hundred and fifty. There's gonna be kind of a two-day event out of this. We're gonna do a Taste of Muscatine Friday night down on Second Street, so everybody can go down and have the small businesses set up. Kind of a social pre-race event for everybody to get together. The race is going to be Saturday morning on August second. I think the starting gun is gonna go off around eight AM. After the race is over, I kind of wanted to add to this. I personally did the Quad City Triathlon last year, and it was just a race only. For attendance purposes and for the whole experience and the whole atmosphere, I wanted to add to it, so it's not just the race. There's going to be a large farmer's market set up down there for afterwards. There's gonna be a kids' area at the beach for kids' activities, and there's also gonna be a kids' exercise zone where if they can do like a mini triathlon setup of different exercises and stuff, we've got the funding to give the kids prizes. We're gonna do like sandcastle competitions and dunk tanks, treasure hunting with metal detectors for the kids. So there's gonna be a lot of different aspects of this going on besides just the race. So it's gonna be like a full-day event. And then after the event is done at the park, everything is gonna transition back down to the riverfront, and we're gonna have a band, vendors. Brad's gonna kind of take the reins on that. He's gonna take care of that part for it, but we're trying to turn it into a kind of a weekend event so that people come to town, they stay, they circulate money while they're here in town, and it's good for everybody throughout the year. Even though it's only a one-day event, it gives people something to get in shape and do things all year long. I'm hoping that there can be new running groups, startup, new swim groups, new bike groups. I personally ride down with Harpers on Tuesdays and Thursdays when the weather's nice out. I love it. It's good exercise, and it's good company. So I'm hoping that as this makes its way around and gets to be known by everybody, that it sparks off different groups and healthy activities for people throughout the year to get ready for it. Part of what I'm here for, to ask approval, we have a closed-circuit race going on, which means all of the bike route and the run route are gonna be closed off, so there's no traffic interference. I've already had the meetings with the county board, and they've already approved all the roads to be closed. So it's very pricey to bring in a company and pay for all of that stuff to happen. I've talked with Brian over at Public Works. He is on board with having a crew set up for the weekend to take a truck and trailer down with all the barricades. We'll have volunteers manning all the intersections, but I would like the city to pitch in for the event, to provide the barricades, have some side-by-sides designated for it, have... Depending on if it's Public Works or the Parks Department, we haven't quite got it decided what we want to do, but I want to get the bike route cleaned the night before and have the roadways all swept just for a safety aspect of it. USA Triathlon is gonna have, there's a big checklist of everything that I have to meet as far as safety standards to have the event covered by the insurance policy. They fully cover everything, the city, the park, anybody, nobody's liable for anything at the event. That's why it's part of the sanctioning, of why I wanted to get it sanctioned. So USA Triathlon will actually be sending officials here. They will be staying the weekend, and they will be part of officiating everything since it's gonna be a qualifying event. If anything else comes up along the way, aside from my immediate thoughts of what we're gonna need, I just kind of, I'm asking everybody to be on board so that the city financially is gonna be getting all the benefits from this weekend event, even though it's gonna be down at the park. People are gonna be staying in hotels, grocery shopping, anything related to the event that they're here for for the weekend is gonna be spent in the city. So I would like the city to kick in and approve the resources from Public Works to be able to make the event happen.
So I have to say, so can you talk a little bit about the prize purse? Because I think this is really fantastic for everybody to hear how it typically is. I mean, you could have easily just started out. We're gonna have just fifty people, but you're going for the big Kahuna right away. So why don't you talk about that?
With, I didn't do a whole lot of research. I just kind of came up with numbers in my head of what I thought would be an average prize purse for the elites to come in to compete for. After talking with other race directors at the triathlons and seeing what the average payouts are, I know at the Quad City Triathlon, when I was there for the open divisions, if you want to come in as a pro in the elite class, first place was five hundred dollars. We are having five thousand dollars, and that's both men and women. We are gonna have two thousand for second, both men and women, and a thousand for third. So when I was talking with the registration company that's handling everything on the websites, they heard that dollar amount, and it sounds like that's gonna be about a six to eight-hour radius of all the pros that are gonna seriously consider this event just from the prize purse aspect of it. It's a pretty heavy prize purse. So it's not something that's in the common budgets of all the other area triathlons. It's a lot higher.
I'm so glad you're leveraging like one of our county's best assets, Deep Lakes. I mean, and you do a fantastic job managing it too, but what a great asset to swim in Deep Lakes. Go down, is it Stewart Road that you'd be going down for biking?
Yeah, so the bike route, when you leave the main area, so the transition area is basically the main hub of the event. Everybody starts off in the swim, then they come into transition, get on the bikes, they come back to the same area, and then they go do the run. So the swim will be... boys' cross-country runs and stuff. Anybody's more than welcome to use the structure to put up and, and utilize it to help just kind of add a little aspect to the event. So I'm hoping this will kind of spill over into other people's events too, and kind of boost everybody's attendance and, and just kind of create a spark for the town to get everybody interested in it. So.
Councilmember Brockert.
I do have a question, Adam. It's my understanding that Stewart Road will be completely reconstructed this summer. Have you gotten assurances from the county that that will be finished?
So we don't have assurances that it will be finished, but part of our approval meeting to make this happen, it's going to be understood with the county engineer and the contractors. Whatever we need to do come race day, they're going to make sure that nothing is interfered with as far as the, the construction of the roads or anything. There will be, they know the intersections and they know the route that we need. So depending on how they're gonna stage the construction, it's gonna be laid out so that it doesn't interfere with the triathlon.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lampy.
Volunteers, I have heard a lot about this already, as I'm, I'm a runner and stuff. So a lot of people are talking about this. But how can people get involved? How can people volunteer? You know, do you have a place that volunteers can go and sign up and stuff? How do they go about that?
Yes. So on the, on the website, it's muscatintriathlon.com. On that website, there's an area that you can go to, to sign up to be a volunteer. My personal contact information with my phone and email are available also. If people want to stop by the Police Department and talk to me, or if they just want to give me a call, between Katie and I, we're gonna create a list of what everybody's wanting to, to sign up for, like what areas they want to be involved in, so that we can kind of keep a, a running tally of what all we've got. We're gonna need a lot of volunteers for it. So.
Yeah. I, I know there's, the running community within Muscatine is excited about this. So
Good.
I think you should have some really good support from the community.
Good.
You can compete too as either an individual or a team. So if you only want to run, you can find somebody to swim or bike for you. So there's, there's a lot of ways you can do it.
Yeah, we already have a team
I don't think it's
in mind.
He's looking at you. Motorized bicycles?
No, no, motorized bicycles.
We have a whole committee of people too. So like Julie Gendrich is doing some of the youth activities. We've got Connie Mann helping. We've got Travis Mapio, or what's his last name?
McConaughey.
McConaughey. So we've got a whole group of people, and everybody's trying to find volunteers for their sections of it and coordinate stuff. So if anybody wants to join us, they can. We're working on swag bags. So if you have a business and you'd like to contribute or have something in there, you're more than welcome to, you know, put something into the swag bag to try to get people into your business while they're here and stuff. So we really want to get people out in the community.
I think one of the things in talking with some of the, the business people that I've dealt with here, I don't know exactly what they're going to be doing, but in the talks that we've had, it sounds like they are going to come up with some of their own philosophies with their employees to get signed up. An example would be if, if you bring your finishing time in and you complete the triathlon and you bring it in, they might give you like a paid day off or a half a day paid off. So they're gonna try to encourage employees to get involved with this. Most of the businesses that I've been talking to are very interested in this, and they're fully supportive of it. So it sounds like it's got a pretty good head of steam so far.
I have a question.
You bet.
So if, would there be some incentive or prize money if three members from our city council challenged three members from the Board of Supervisors and three members from the school board? Because I, I think we have some terrific athletes here on the city council, and we could without question
[laughing]
do a great job with, you know,
If we need to
Matt, Matt Conner could swim.
Oh, yeah.
Peggy, or Jeff could swim. Nadine's a biker. You know, Don can run.
We need to come up with a special category for that. I'm sure we can come up with a nice
Well, try to
There you go. You can just give us the trophies.
See, we can do.
Hey, if you can, if you can dance, if you can dance, you can go out and run. Oh, we're not
There you go, Mayor. I don't have to worry about being part of that team because I am
In my sleep.
a volunteer
Good.
for the event.
Good.
I've been told I'm a volunteer for the event.
Was it voluntold? Is that what it, yeah?
Yeah.
So, so you were asking earlier that you have talked to DPW, Brian Steiman, City Administrator Morrison, is that, are you, are you okay with that? Or do we need to look into that? How does that?
No, I think we can, we can work out a plan and work through that. I don't see that being a big deal. We have a lot of, I think, folks in our leadership team would be absolutely thrilled to do that, be part of it. So I look forward to it.
Thank you.
And I like how you're focusing on the small businesses as well. I know that you
had some plans with that, you know, with the swag bags of having items in there. So well done.
One of the goals that we have with that, the businesses want to donate, and I tell everybody upfront, like the donations are appreciated. But part of the philosophy of this, of why we have the budget that we do, I don't want anybody donating to it. I want to go around and buy everything for it, so that instead of businesses having to donate and give their money to the event, hoping that they get business, I just want to instantly start off by helping people make money and circulate money right away, so that it's not costing the small businesses anything. Hopefully, it's just a way to, to generate revenue and get money circulating in the community. So that was part of the budget set up for that.
And making it more than just a race event, I think is a very smart idea as well. Making it, you know, the day before and the day of and stuff, making it more of an event and not just a race is very smart as well. So well done with that as well.
Thank you.
Just gonna say, you've come a long ways in the past three and a half months, haven't you?
I haven't slept a whole lot.
Slept very well. Any other questions for Adam or Katie?
Great work.
Yeah, great job, you guys.
Well done.
This is great. Thank you.
You guys can have that big sign up somewhere. Do you have a good spot?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Do you have a, do you have a digital copy of that?
Not yet, but we'll get one.
Okay.
We have a lot of small flyers too, so we can leave some of those.
So we could put it on our new TV down there.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
I'll give it to Travis and see if he can do that.
Awesome. Appreciate it. All right. Councilmember Gendrich, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do. The Love Like Loudon Lofgren Blood Drive is scheduled for Saturday, January 25th. It's from 7:00 to 1:00 PM at our local blood drive. And of course, you know, to make the effort to get out and give blood that day is certainly appreciated by that effort. And if you, you know, if you can't make that day, why get out and give blood some other time between now and the 25th, and make sure you donate your, designate your donation to the Love Like Loudon function effort.
That's great. Councilmember Brockert.
Yes, I do. I concur with Councilmember Gendrich that donating blood is very important. So if you can, you feel good, get yourself into the blood center. I'd also like to express condolences to our former city administrator, Carol Webb, whose husband Howard lost his battle with cancer on January 2nd.
Councilmember Conner.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Gordon.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne.
I'd like to say that Eagles and Ivories are coming up. A lot of other good things going on in town. If you can't find something to do, you're just not, just not looking. So.
Councilmember Lampy.
Yes, Your Honor. So with all of the recent events around the world, between the California wildfires, the hurricanes, and, and everything else that's taken place across the nation, you know, I think we ought to stop and say a few prayers for those individuals that are affected by it, and also say a prayer of thanks for all the first responders, the fire, firemen, the police, et cetera, that have stepped into those situations. So make sure you just pause and, and reflect on that for a minute as you go about your day.
Councilmember Osborne, you have one more thing?
I failed to mention that today is National Law Enforcement Day. I'd like to say thank you to our local law enforcement for the county, Muscatine City, the county, and all of them.
Absolutely. City Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
City Administrator?
I'm good, sir.
All right. And yeah, definitely, definitely echo prayers for California in these tough times as well. And I'll take motion to adjourn.
Some of